I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. Wow, loud. Good evening. The first item we need to do is we need to add an item under new business, which is item number 10. I need to add a B, which is the acceptance of the superintendent's resignation letter for the purpose of retirement. And we will have a vote anticipated on that, too. So may I add 10B? And once again, is the acceptance of the superintendent's letter of resignation for the purpose of retirement. Second, thank you. Do I have any -- well, we'll let Jim discuss it at that point, but I have any discussion on this adding this item. Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. Under the chairman's report, I will not talk about the superintendent, so we'll wait until we get to that. But I did want to say that the budget did pass by a overwhelming majority of over 800 votes, so we are very pleased with that. As we had discussed at our last meeting, we are going to try to hold off on making any adjustments. The ones that we know we can make, the two nurses, that type of stuff, we'll go forth with. Those reductions, because those are the ones we were going to make anyway. But for all the rest, we're going to hold off as long as possible to see if Hartford comes to any decision, because we do have a contingency plan put in place by the Board of Finance that if the reduction is not as great as they had anticipated for the -- that they incorporated in the budget, then there would be a contingency where we'd get more of the money, some of the money back, hopefully in the neighborhood of $650,000. But it's all dependent on what the cut is. So we're not going to try to make cuts and then have to reverse them a couple of weeks later. So we're going to try to hold off as long as possible to see if there is any movement in Hartford or any type of, you know, decision by them as to what they're planning on doing with this municipal aid package.
Is that June to September? We can expect Hartford to make that announcement because we can do it since September. Is that correct?
You know, legally, I think, yeah, I mean, I think they're supposed to vote on a budget before June 30th, because just like us, their fiscal year starts in July. Now, whether or not they do that, that is the big question. They could potentially go, you know, into July or August before they make the decision. I mean, they could, and just like, I think there's some steps for an emergency, you know, where you just move forth with what you have, you know, to keep everything running. But hopefully, there'll be a decision well before then. But we'll have to wait and see. I don't know. I haven't really heard much.
No, it was quiet.
It's pretty quiet. So, all right, I have nothing else, so we will move on to the consent agenda. So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thanks, David. Any discussion on that? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. Reports of our committees and liaisons. We will start with our MasC reps.
So the band Chorus Color Guard and Strange just came back from the music department trip. I went on that trip, and we went to Virginia Beach and also went to a music workshop at Christopher Newport University to help us improve our sound, which was a good experience. And there's also a band concert on the 27th. Also, our own Mr. Kovza ran the Boston Marathon to raise money for his alibi. And his time was 3 hours, 54 minutes, and 51 seconds, which is really good. And there will be a blood drive on this Friday, and the talent show is this Thursday at 7:00 PM.
Tomorrow, we will be, the students who are not taking the cap testing, which will be occurring for sophomores, will be following a 2A-2B schedule. And for juniors, our, we will be going to an assembly, which will discuss capstone. And tomorrow night, it will be a parent capstone night at 6:30 PM. The robotics competition is occurring. They're actually leaving, one of the members of my volleyball team is leaving at 8:00 PM tonight, so they're going to Kentucky. So best of luck to them. Next week, on the 25th, DECA will be having five people, including myself, who, Mrs. Cleaney, of course, the head of DECA, we will be going to Anaheim, California, to compete on a national level. And the, I just want to emphasize that under four hour for a marathon is very impressive.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else? All right, hearing none, we will move on. Public participation? All right, no public participation. We will move on to the report of the superintendent.
Just to piggyback on what Donna was talking about with the budget, John and I made the rounds today, and we handed out 11 layoff letters to staff members. In the worst-case scenario, that the cuts exceed $3 million to the town of Monroe. We explained that to these people as best we could, and asked them to please be patient. Well, this plays out in Hartford, because we can't really do or say anything more until we know what the municipal aid is to the town of Monroe. So that's not always the most comfortable part of our jobs, is to let people know that kind of information. Gabby, you want to talk about the fund activity statement?
Sure. So we still have a spending freeze. We're still watching it closely, and I keep reminding people that it's, we're tight this year. We've just had some unexpected things. Insurance continues to be difficult. We have a balance of about $400,000 as we speak. So I feel like I'm constantly the doom and gloom person here when it comes to insurance, but John finally admitted that I was probably right this year to be doom and gloom. So hopefully, hopefully next year's better, and we have a lot less sick people, which, you know, not to make light, but I just, you know, it's really a struggle. It's very worrisome for all of us. And, you know, to echo Jim, we're just sitting tight right now. We're waiting. You know, we can't really roll the budget over. We can't really pre-buy things either, because we just kind of don't know where we're at. We don't know if we have to put all those priority one cuts into effect. So it makes it a little complicated on our end.
We do have some hirings that we posted as anticipated openings, because there are positions, regardless of what cuts we have. We have positions that we do need to fill in certain certification areas. But it's tenuous. It's hard to do that until we know full well what's going on. Okay, thanks, Gabby. Insurance costs. John, we've been in conversations with One Digital, really trying to understand, you know, why such a dramatic increase this year. And John's going to go over some numbers with you. So you have it in front of you, but it's also going to be behind us as well.
And on the board, I've circled the areas that we're talking about, so if you need to look at it up there, it might make it more comfortable. And, you know, Gabby, Jim, and I have been working on this, so I'm sure that they'll chime in as we go through this whole thing. You can see in the first column, it shows what we budgeted for our medical costs this year, the $5 million. So that was what we had budgeted. But if you go across to the next column, that's actually what we have spent year-to-date. And this was back in March, so this is from March, the end of March. So year-to-date, it was $3.8 million. So with that information, One Digital made a determination. They projected that instead of $5 million, it's going to be $5.6 million at the end of this year. So that's, you know, part of the reason why we had the spending freeze, and we're looking at that. So we, at the last column, we proposed, or One Digital helped us, propose a medical claims budget of $5.3 million. Now, it's less than this year, because if you look, and I'm, I'll show you this in a little bit, if you look at our five-year average, this is really an anomaly this year. And, you know, One Digital says to us, and has been saying to us, you really have five years of, you know, you look at your five-year growth. You have really good times, and then about every five years, you have a bad year. And this is our bad year. So we're anticipating that next year's not going to be as bad. That's what we anticipate. So if you look at the next line down, that's HSA funding, that HSA funding has changed, because as you know, we, through contract negotiations, we negotiated the 2,000, 4,000 single-family deductible to 2,500, 5,000. So we still have to pay 50% of that, but that certainly helped with our premiums. And so that, you'll see that cost went up a little bit. And then you will also see a change in the stop-loss. And stop-loss, as you know, is $175,000. So once our claimants reach $175,000 for the year, then stop-loss kicks in, and that insurance pays the rest. Our, we had a pretty large stop-loss this year, more than expected. More people made stop-loss than expected. So when they looked at our claims and they looked at our history, they rebid our stop-loss, because it came in very high. So One Digital said, you know what, maybe there's other companies that can do better with the cost. They're always doing that. They're always trying to rebid, trying to save us money. And because of our history, this was the cheapest they could find. So we still went up over $100,000 on our stop-loss premium because of our history. So that's on there. If you move down to the RX, the prescription, you can see that the RX cost is increasing. There's just no doubt about it. And that's not a Monroe phenomenon. That's a state, nation phenomenon. So our RX had to increase on that. Then the next column down is our dental. Now, we saved some money on our dental, because again, we went out to bid. We now went from Benicare to Cigna Dental, and we've saved some money on that. So you'll see there's a cost saving there. Again, we like the fact that One Digital doesn't just say, well, just stay with what you have. They're constantly going out looking to see how they can save us money. So that's why you see a decrease in our dental, because of that. So the total cost increase for the costs is 5.1%. And you'll see that in the line under total costs. If you go to the line at the bottom of the next column under funding, you'll see that there's an increase in employee contribution to 12%, now that's again, part of the negotiation that we've been doing over the years. So employees are paying a bigger share of the cost of insurance that they have in the past. And then finally, at the bottom, you'll see that the HSA funding, again, that's at 2,000, 4,000, up to 2,500, 5,000 deductible for single family. So it's a higher deductible. But again, our 50% is a little bit more than it has been in the past, but it saves us in the long run, because premiums go down. So you'll see that. So the total increase for the Board of Ed funding is a 9.2% increase. And you'll also see that represents the $600,000 increase that we put into the budget. So that was where that number, 600,000, came from. Came from looking at all these numbers, looking as much cost savings as we can to move on. This is hard to see, but what Jim had asked One Digital when they were with us, is he asked them to look at, how do we rank? You know, what do we look like Monroe compared to other districts? So this is what they did for us. They took, what One Digital did is they compared us to other districts that are like us, and they did it by county. So you'll see the first one is a Talon County district. They don't tell us what district that is, but there's a district in Talon, then there's a district in Middlesex, and then a Hartford-Litchfield district, another Talon, New Haven, and then Fairfield. And at the bottom is Monroe. When you look at all the things, like the design plan, the 2,000, 4,000, or the 2,55, we are at the high end. We are at the 2,55. And some, there's a few others that are at that. But mostly, they're at the 2,4. So we have done a good job, we feel, or you have done a good job, when we are negotiating to move up that HSA deductible. You'll also see that HSA funding at 50%. You know, Monroe is right there in the pack at 50% funding. So that worked out well. And if you look at the last column, it's the teacher cost share, you'll see that most of them are under us, except the other district in Fairfield County is at 21%. We're at 20%. So again, we're right there at the top levels, which means that the negotiations are working, and we're really comfortable where we are. So that was one of the assignments we gave One Digital to say, look, do we, are we an anomaly? Are we too high, too low? Where are we? So this kind of shows that we're kind of leading the pack when it comes to the cost savings, and where the other districts fall. The other thing that they did for us that is really, I think, important for all of us, because we are going to have an increase in premiums this year for our employees, and this was really important to look at. And so the way you read this is, this is the five-year trend. The way you read it is February 2012. We did it in February, because that's when we asked them to do it, so they gave us the data from February. If you look at that, February in 2011 to February 2012, you can see the medical trend is up 13.3%. So there was a 13.3% increase in the medical trend claims. From 12 to 13, there was a decrease of 10.1%. And you can read that. From 13 to 14, there was an increase. From 14 to 15, there was a decrease. From 15 to 16, there was only a slight increase, 1.6%. And then from last year to this year, it's a huge increase of 35%. When you look at that five-year average, it's an average of 6.7% each year for the increase, which is really good. So when somebody says, or when people say to us, well, you know, this self-insure, you know, your numbers are down, it's really not working very well, if you look over five years, there is no district who are fully insured that only had a 6.7% increase each year. So we really feel like, although this year is not a good year, we really feel like over the long haul, that it really actually saved us money. And we're hoping that the next five years will be like the five years previous, where we had some change in that. So I think that really helps us look at where we are, what we're doing. You know, we did meet with them and talk about other plans. Are we still, is it still right for us to be in our self-insure plan? And at this point, they feel, where, you know, we wouldn't save money if we went to a different plan, like the Connecticut plan or the state plan. And especially if we look at what happened over the last five years. So I'm, Jimmy and Gabby, I don't know if.
No, that's all.
Can we get that email to us, John, the last two slides?
Sure. The Stepney Roof Project is still moving forward. We're having conversations pretty much on a daily basis. The Board of Finance tonight is hopefully passing a resolution, a bond resolution. Jack, you're looking.
It was tabled.
It was tabled?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know why.
Okay. All right, I don't have an answer for that. That's going on right now. So there are still some difficulties going forward with this process with the Stepney Roof Project. And lastly, a community member brought up the Wingman Program. The Wingman Program is a positive behavioral program that came out of Newtown, out of Ian and Nicole Hockley in memory of their son Dylan's. They created a foundation called Dylan's Wings of Change. And over the course of a couple of years now, they develop a program that they're instituting in several schools around the country, that gives you positive behavioral reinforcements and that type of thing. Stepney Elementary had taken on some aspects of the Wingman Program, because they have a K-5, they call it the K-5 Program, where fifth graders are working with kindergarteners. But they also had all of their staff trained, as well as Vaughn-Hallow in PBIS, Positive Behavioral Intervention.
Strategies.
Strategies. And so I talked to the elementary school principals, and the feeling is that we've invested quite heavily in PBIS, have programming already in place between that and between our guidance curriculum program, that we've covering most of these aspects, that we did not, at this time, feel like a mandate to change and move to a new program. This is still an early prototype, I would say. I think that some of the lesson planning and things of this at Stepney Elementary is actually being incorporated into the program, right, John?
Yeah, they're developing some of the lessons.
Right. So at this time, we don't see any need or reason to go wholesale into anything from Wingman Program. And that's it.
All right. Anybody have questions for Jim? All right, we will move on to presentations, and we're going to have curriculum development presentation for, as part of our professional development.
So I'm going to share an overview of the process. You typically see kind of the tail end. Alan is part of our committee, so he sees a lot of it. I'm just going to give you a little bit of an overview of what we do and how curriculum gets to be approved and considers something that we will use in our district. The Monroe Public Schools has a mission statement, and we also have a curriculum philosophy that supports that mission statement. Our curriculum philosophy supports the Monroe Public Schools' mission by ensuring that instruction is engaging, rigorous, relevant, and inquiry-based, while meeting the needs of the 21st century learner. All students upon graduation will be college and career-ready, prepared to succeed in a diverse global community. So that's the philosophy through which we do everything. We have a committee, and I actually have 50 people on my distribution list for the committee. Average, I have about 20 to 25 people who will attend the monthly meetings. We have administrators, teachers. Alan is our board rep, and we have a parent rep from parent council. It's about a five-step process, but we don't necessarily always follow the steps in sequence. We have a step 1R, which is just the review of a curriculum. A 1N is a new curriculum, or if we have to have major revisions to something, then we consider it a 1N. We have step 2, that's if it's needed, we're going to look at instructional supplies. Step 3 is a presentation to curriculum council, and then to the board, if it's proposed to do that. And step 4 is we actually implement it. We have it in a classroom. We monitor it and see how it's working. And then step 5 is you continue to review and monitor till you come back around to doing one of the others. So I'm going to go into a little bit detail about what each piece looks like. So 1R, as I mentioned, is something that we do at the beginning. And we have our curriculum, our K-5 coordinators, our 612 secondary instructional leaders will put together a vertical team of classroom teachers at the different grade levels or subject areas. And they will review and revise that curriculum. They compare what we have to current standards. Connecticut standards change. We get national standards that get adopted by the state, so they want to compare to see where are we? Are we up to speed with where those are? Then they say, why do we need a revision? Is that revision needed because the standards change and we need to do something? Is the revision needed because of instructional strategies that need to be changed, because it's better to teach students a certain way? Then we look at student data to support that revision. We look at the assessments that teachers are doing in the classroom, whether they're formative or benchmarks. Then we explore what other districts are doing to see, how have they made the changes with these new standards, or the new changes in instructional strategies? Then they talk about, what do we need to actually get all this work done? What kind of curriculum hours are we going to need? And any professional development training that the teachers are going to need in order to bring everybody up to speed. So once all of that is completed, the vertical team will meet with John and/or myself to kind of walk us through what they're thinking and where it's going. Then they'll start taking a look at things. If it's a brand-new curriculum, then there's a lot more pieces to it. With this, they actually have to come up with a rationale. Why do they want this curriculum, like I talked to before with the review? They have to give a narrative as to what will this new curriculum look like? What's kind of the purpose behind it? Are there prerequisites? Most often, this is talking about things that happen at MasC. So are there prerequisites? Are there courses that a student would need to take in a sequence before they can get to that course? And then the big question is staffing. Do we have staffing to be able to make that change and add this new course? Or are we expecting to have to hire new people for these things? So through the proposal, all these things are answered. They also have to put in a scope and sequence, kind of map out what is it going to look like for students to take this course, if it's a half-year or a full-year course. Again, identify the curriculum writing hours and any professional development that's going to need to be done by our staff in order to get them ready for this course. Through this process, they're also looking for materials. Do we need new materials in order to meet these new standards? Or are the materials that we currently have, are they outdated and there are new things? So they will take a look at multiple sources. They'll call the reps from the companies and ask them, send me samples. And the vertical team of teachers will take a look at things and decide which is the best one for us and would fit our needs here at MasC or at any of the grade levels. Then they'll identify, again, the curriculum hours that are needed to put this all together, because that becomes a piece of the actual changing of the curriculum. They'll complete that form. That form will then come forward to, as part of the process, to the Board of Ed for approval for a new one. It'll also include any funding requests. So that gets part of our budget in October. So I'm asking the secondary instructional leaders at the end of a school year, what do you think? What are your plans for next year? I already had this conversation with them last month. And in light of the budget, we're not sure how many new things will be coming next year. But we'll be keeping our eyes open to see, are there new things that we need to bring forward? So that in October, when we're planning our budget and getting it all ready in November, to be presented to the board in December, we have actual quotes from companies to know what these cost impacts will be. Then we have a presentation. That vertical team will present to curriculum council. They will share information about the course, all the things that I've told you. If the curriculum council, after they've kind of vetted and asked a lot of questions, there may be some revision work done to either the forms or to the presentation. And if curriculum council agrees, then it's brought to the Board of Education to have that new course or that new material approved by the Board of Ed. Then the work starts, curriculum writing. Our vertical teams will be assigned a certain number of hours. If it's a full-year course or a half-year course, there's a certain number of hours as part of the process. And the teachers will work over that summer to get everything ready for that course to be able to start in that new school year. See if this is going to work. Here is a sample of a fifth-grade curriculum writing document, fifth-grade social studies unit. So part of the curriculum writing includes an overview for the teachers. This is all public, what you see right in front of you. If you go to our departments link on the website, under curriculum and instruction, on the left-hand side, right at the top, it says our curriculum maps. And then you can go to any grade level, any subject area. I just pulled this as an example. This is fifth-grade social studies, has an overview of the course. It shows the different standards between our Connecticut course standards, as well as the social studies framework. There are essential questions as part of this unit. Then it goes on to list the concepts and skills that we expect students to know and be able to do while going through this unit. And then there are the resources, whether they're technology resources or others. At the bottom of each page is a faculty, and only faculty have access to this. And we'll see, John is logged in. So this comes up as faculty page. There are all links in here for classroom teachers for assessments. This, on the elementary level, ensures that we have continuity between our three buildings to make sure that the material is being taught and resources are being used the same way. There are lots of resources. You'll see quizzes and tests are in here. You'll also see a scope and sequence of the curriculum that's going to be taught, and resources for students, ReadWorks articles and things in here. So it's pretty involved, and it's really worth, it's what the teacher uses on a day-to-day basis. From all the work of getting us through this curriculum process, the curriculum maps are what are most important to the classroom teachers. We have a review and revision schedule, which is very hard to see there. That's a five-year going across the columns. And where are we with step 1, 2, 3, 1N, 1R, 2, 3, 4, or 5? It's a very fluid document, because one year, we may think we're in a review process, and it should only take one year. But then there are new resources, like next-generation science resources are coming out. That is not a one-year review. We want to see what they are before we look at getting something and making a purchase for the district. They are listed on there. I have English and math and science and social studies, but we also have them for world language, CTE, PE Health, art, music, library. language, CTE, PE health, art, music, library, and school counseling. The purpose of our curriculum council is to provide a forum to really take a look at curriculum and propose those new resources, get critical feedback from the committee on the authors or that vertical team, have a K-12 perspective, so we have a lot of conversations that happen K-12, so it's not just things that are happening in one building, provide a review and revision cycle so that we're not just having one curriculum that gets written and then it's the only thing we have for the next 10 years or 20 years. And to ensure that our curriculum has those common elements. And it's much more. We have looked at field trips across the district, K-12, um, making sure, again, the continuity between our three elementaries, but also looking at the costs, looking at things that are repeated. We have looked at the one-to-one technology committee, which will be coming from Jack Zamory, the results of that subcommittee. It, it's an opportunity for us to vet things and to really look at our curriculum and see where we are and where we're going. Pretty encompassing. And that's it in a nutshell. Kind of quickly went through the, the five-step process. There's not a sequence that it's, you have to go through step one, two, three, four, five, because depending on the needs will depend on when it happens and how long we stay in that step. I know I said it already, but I'm gonna say it again. We just don't know because it depends on where we are with the standards, where we are with curriculum development. Um, but it's, it's pretty involved. So I don't know if you have any questions that I can help answer.
All right.
No questions? Thank you, Sheila.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity.
Curriculum writing and, and doing all of that preparation, it really is a big behind-the-scenes endeavor. And there are always a lot of differing points of view on things like curriculum, uh, both at the local, state, and, and national level. We wrestle through getting, uh, social studies standards and things of that nature, for instance. Uh, it's not nearly as clear-cut as it may seem to be, uh, at first glance. The fact that we have so many people in the district, um, that participate in our curriculum council, uh, is really a testament to the professionalism of the staff here, uh, especially under Sheila's leadership in this area. So, thank you, Sheila.
All right, we will move on to all business. We have two policies up for second review with a vote. Um, do I have a motion to approve policy 5121.3, which is academic dishonesty, cheating, and plagiarism, and policy 5134, which is married and pregnant students as presented? Thank you. Do I have a second, Shannon? Thank you. Do I have any discussion on these? Most of them were just updates, correct, John?
Yes, yeah.
All right. A hearing none. Um, all in favor of passing these two policies? Great, thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to item number 10, which is new business. And the first item is the approval of the 2018-19 school calendar with contingency plan. Do I have a motion to approve that? Thank you. Second? Thank you. Discussion. Jim, would you like to?
Yeah, the, the calendar is pretty straightforward. I don't really have any comments about the, the calendar itself, more about the contingency plan. The way the wording was in the current contingency plan, um, when you, when we said that we would add, step number one there on page 34, additional days to the last day of school until we had, if there were six emergency closures by January 29th, then school will be in session on February 15th. In addition, we added that, okay? And, and item three here. In addition, if there are two more or more additional emergency closures between the 29th and February 26th, uh, school will be in session on April 15th, which is the PD day. And then in addition, uh, if there is an excess of 13 days before March 22nd, we'd start working into the, um, the week of vacation in April. Uh, but it was the addition, in addition, because there was confusion of, if you had six, did the clock start running again before you started taking away the February day? So I think this is just a clearer way of presenting it.
All right. And I take it this matches pretty closely to our regional calendar?
Regional calendar, yeah.
Which we're still...
Following along with.
Following along with. Does anybody have any questions on this, on this? All right, hearing none. All in favor of approving the 2018-19 school calendar with the contingency plan? Great, thank you. Motion passes. We will now move on to item B, which reluctantly is the, um, the acceptance of the superintendent's, uh, letter of resignation for the purpose of retirement. Do I have a motion to approve that? Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Discussion, Jim.
Do I have to? Um, I think that my letter, uh, really in essence, uh, states my very high opinion of Monroe and what it's done for me, both personally and professionally. Uh, your leadership throughout the years that I've been here, uh, has really been, uh, outstanding. Uh, you, you stand as a united, united and unified board. You're deeply concerned about what kids are learning and you're deeply concerned about high expectations for staff. Has made working here and being a part of the team, uh, just the most enjoyable, uh, place for me to be and really does, for me, uh, become the capstone of my career. So, uh, but there does come a time, uh, in one's life when you sit back and you reflect and you, and you start to question whether the time is right or whether it's not. And, uh, that was really a two-year process for me. Um, and I, I finally have decided that it is time for me to move on. It also coincided very nicely, as you know, uh, we as a group have been committed to saving people in all of the cuts that we have done over the past six years, okay? We have always made every effort possible to save our people that we've trained and invested in, um, so that, uh, you know, we try to do it through attrition and, and try to make it work without having to hand out letters to people and then fire them after we've invested in them. You know, this year, uh, there's been no secret that there has been a central office position that was going to be eliminated, uh, this year because of the budget cuts, okay? And so it was easy for me to say that I'm the face, uh, that gets cut, uh, from that process. And, uh, you know, now we can reorganize some positions, uh, within district office and hopefully, uh, carry on the good work, uh, that you've grown accustomed to over the years. So I wanna thank you, uh, and we'll have other conversations, I'm sure, as the year goes on. I'm certainly not disappearing tonight. Um, you know, our plan is to work, uh, you know, right up until the 30th of June and get the job done. And as I say in my letter, I extend, uh, the opportunity to do whatever I can over the summer, uh, if and when needs arise that I could be, uh, of help on. So, thank you very much.
Anybody have anything? Thank you.
I wanna, I wanna express sincere appreciation and gratitude, Jim, for your dedication and commitment to all the students in Monroe that have passed through these buildings in your six years here, your staff, your leadership and your commitment. And you're definitely, like your letter says, leaving Monroe a much, a much better place. The school system is, is top-notch, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, Alan, go ahead.
Jim, I just wanna say thank you for putting students first and, um, maintaining, um, high standards for our teachers and, um, you know, making Monroe such an excellent place to, um, to educate children. Um, that you've been, uh, tremendous and, and all that, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're gonna leave some big shoes to fill.
Yeah, I, I think I speak for everybody that, you know, we reluctantly accept your retirement. I mean, nobody, I think, is thrilled with it and we would prefer that you would stay forever, but that's quite obviously unrealistic. Um, I mean, I think, I, I mean, I know that all the accomplishments that you have under your tenure year has just improved our school system tremendously. Schools of distinction, our blue ribbon school here at Massey, um, you know, everything that has been accomplished both by yourself, the staff, the, the students, the teachers, um, is just unparalleled. Um, I think that most people look at Monroe and see what outstanding work we have done here in our school system. And I'm, it's selling itself. People wanna move here because of the excellent school system that we provide. And, you know, that has been your leadership of the past six years and we're sorry to have you go, but we know that you wanna retire and move on to different endeavors and, um, you're surely gonna be missed by everybody here and we appreciate everything you've done for us.
Thank you very much, but no one person ever does all of those things. It's all of the, uh, people that I'm surrounded with do it. So, thank...
Anybody else?
Wish you well.
Yes.
Really wish you well. I think you got, you know, the next chapter will be an exciting one and be missed, but I hope, uh, I hope lots of good things are coming your way and I know they are.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite you to the retirement luncheon. Sorry, I couldn't resist.
I already put my name on the list. As John said to me earlier this evening, he says, "You never leave Monroe once you've been here." And I think he's absolutely right, so we'll be seeing ya.
Absolutely. Anybody else?
Tough words, tough words, but I agree with everything that's been said.
There is one thing I forgot to mention in superintendent's report, if I could do that now.
Absolutely.
Today, we had, uh, representatives from Google here at the middle school, uh, all day. Uh, news trucks showed up and, uh, this came through, um, Jack, Cheklini had gotten contact from Congressman Heims's office. Uh, so Jack, do you wanna just say what happened and how it all went today?
Yeah, we were fortunate a couple of months, months ago to have, uh, contact from Congressman Jim Heim's office. Um, they thought about Jackie Hollow and our program, both campuses, and that, um, we would be a good fit for a program that Google had been, uh, putting together and is premiering across the country now, which is an internet safety program, uh, year four middle school with students. Um, we've, uh, interacted with Google. It was, uh, it was a great communication, great fit. Um, they sent representatives, I, we had a half a dozen Google representatives here. They actually arrived, uh, yesterday. They were setting up into the evening yesterday and they did a multimedia presentation for the students today, uh, over a, a number of aspects of, of internet safety, including, um, of course, uh, be careful, be careful about what you share. They told, they spoke about the dynamics of what you share on the internet. And that was probably the focus of, uh, of the assembly, but they went into the importance of protecting your personal information, uh, the importance of creating, um, high-quality passwords, um, and then the importance of using the internet, not only in a safe manner, but in a positive manner, use it, use it for positive reasons, um, and, and really avoid the negative. It was, it was really well received by all of the kids.
The kids were very participatory.
This assembly was set.
Yeah, this morning. What was it, three assemblies, right?
Three assemblies, yes. So that we could get all the students...
All, all middle school kids through it.
And at no cost. Google even picked up the busing tab for, to bring the kids from stuff to, to make camp.
Rightness.
And that's a kickoff to our anonymous alert kickoff, which is Thursday. So Thursday, all the students are gonna get the information, all the parents are gonna get the information about anonymous alert. So it's, it was a good segue for that.
Great. All right, great. Well, we have to go back and vote on the acceptance.
Oh, I thought we did that.
No, it's okay. Anybody have anything else on that before we vote? All in favor of accepting Jim's resignation for, well, for retirement? Reluctantly, I'm saying it will pass. Thank you. Does anybody have anything else before we move on to adjournment? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, David. All in favor? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.